Today, we have two items on our Committee of the Whole Agenda. The first one is Parks Recreation and Natural Areas Update Presentation. So with that, we invite our Parks Department to come up and speak.
It's already open at the bottom there. Thank you, Council President Protams, City Council Members, for providing us the opportunity to present to you this evening. My name's Lesley Batlock, the Parks Planning and Natural Resources Director, and alongside me is Erica Schmitz, our Capital Project Coordinator, and also the project lead for this plan update. Also, I believe they're joining us here this evening, nevertheless, they're part of our project team from Community and Economic Development, Angie Mathias, Long Range Planning Manager, and Kitty Bucel Morales, our Assistant Planner. So I'd like to start the presentation off with a plan overview about why this plan is so important to the city. It's really the blueprint for our system. It improves livability, enhances economic development, facilitates new improved recreation opportunities and habitat protection, and is instrumental in promoting a healthy community. And we do this by assessing and predicting the current and future demand and need for recreation facilities and services based upon population, demographics, and participation rates. Once adopted by council, we submit it to the State Recreation and Conservation Office for certification, which allows us to apply for and receive grant funding from other outside sources. So it's instrumental in the city to leverage city funds. I'd like to call your attention to this photograph on the slide, which is the former Hillcrest Elementary School in North Highlands Park and Neighborhood Center, which is now the site of Meadow Crest Accessible Playground, and we'll see a much better photo later in the presentation. So we take a coordinated planning approach with the Parks Recreation and Natural Areas Plan with our high-level planning documents such as the Citywide Comprehensive Plan, companion plans such as the recently adopted Trails and Bicycle Master Plan, and community level planning documents as noted in this slide. The city has a rich history in planning for its parks and recreation system in Renton, with the first plan being adopted in 1978, followed by plans being adopted in 1984, 1993, 2003, and the most recent in 2011. So on this slide are the vision and the seven goals from the adopted 2011 plan, and in 2011, there was a shift of the more detailed policy language from the Citywide Comp Plan to this particular plan. We will be revisiting this policy language to ensure the language reflects the public's desired future direction as we move forward.
I'm now going to address some of the changes that we've seen in Renton since the 2011 plan. In our department, we've had an internal reorganization and an effort to better serve the community. Our department has also added the Neighborhood Program, which is growing quickly. The number of recognized neighborhoods has grown from 72 in 2016 to 103 in 2019. Our organization is changing, and so is the population that we serve. This slide shows a variety of trends that date back from 1990 to the present. The key metrics that we'd like to highlight are the population on top, and the bottom is level of service, which is park acres per thousand residents. The data shows that the level of service is not quite keeping pace with the growing population, and so for the takeaway from this, we'd like to call out that the population is growing faster than our park system. So what this could mean is increased impacts with more people using the same parks. Our community has changed in other ways. Although despite a growing population, our age distribution is largely holding steady. We have roughly the same percentage of residents under 18 and over 65 today as in 2000. However, our population is increasingly diverse and increasingly non-white. The top languages spoken by students in Renton schools today are English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. With a growing population, there's always some challenges, and for our city, what we found is that a growing population means staff is taking on more. We have one example of that in the urban forestry manager who managed 13 contract landscape maintenance sites in 1999 and now manages 52, the same position. The number of special event permits is also growing. It grew from 28 in 2010 to 48 in 2018, 71 percent increase. Since 2010, the Community Service Department's Special Events has added nine new events, not including Neighborhood Program events. So we've been increasing what we do. This graph shows population and level of service. You might recognize that it was also presented as part of the Parks Trails and Community Facilities Initiative, also known as the Community Advisory Committee. And what we're trying to show is if the population continues to grow, our park system will soon be below the city's adopted level of service. So again, this just means that there's going to be increased use of the existing parks and increased wear that leads to maintenance. This is a system-wide view. It doesn't look at geographic equity, but that's an important piece of the plan update that we'll be looking at moving forward.
So we'd like to reflect back on accomplishments since the last plan was adopted to highlight how this plan is utilized to move the city forward in parks, recreation, and natural areas planning, acquisition, development, partnerships, programming, and leveraging city funding. So this is that better slide of the Meadow Crest Accessible Playground. This was completed since the last plan, the former site of the Hillcrest Elementary School and North Highlands Neighborhood Park. You can see there's no fence down the middle. It's one huge, fully accessible playground. We completed our first formal soft-surface trail within the natural area, May Creek. This trail was entirely funded with outside resources. There were no city sources used. We replaced the 50-year-old Riverview Bridge. That, too, was entirely funded with outside resources. We have a significant regional trail connection, which will begin construction later this year to connect the city of Des Moines, Sea-Tac, Burien, Tuck Willa, and Renton from the Sound to Lake Washington. After nearly 30 years, we are nearly there in securing all our easements to connect the Cedar River Trail to Coulomb Park, otherwise known as the Sam Chastain Waterfront Trail. We acquired 40 acres of land along the May Creek Corridor. This has been a 30-year interjurisdictional program between the cities of Newcastle, Renton, and King County. And we dedicated Phase One of the Sunset Neighborhood Park in June of last year and hope to begin construction for Phase Two, the final phase, in the summer of this year. We also acquired a parcel of land to expand Cascade Park and acquired a second parcel of land to connect Cascade Park to Tiffany Park, which was identified in the adopted plan and reflected in the concept plan as well. We've revamped events and programming. We administer grants to the community for improvements, which builds neighborhood relationships, which also builds a stronger community. We have a five-way partnership for youth ages 5 to 14, known as stream, science, technology, recreation, environment, art, and math. And that five-way partnership, which has been formalized, is between the city of Renton, the Renton School District, the Environmental Science Center, Tech Bridge Girls, and Central Rendu. The plan also identified a new community park and community center in the Benson area and to also identify partnerships. The Family First Communities Center fulfills all these needs. There's multiple coordinated planning efforts, both interdepartmentally as well as within the Community Services Department as noted in this slide, which creates a broad, high-level coordinated vision for the city. The plan establishes the framework for the city to pursue and meet standards of excellence. One of the key elements of this plan upon certification is the eligibility to apply for grants for planning, acquisition, development, major maintenance, and recreation programming. And then, as you can see, the city was quite successful in receiving outside funding to leverage city funds. The key item that we heard from the public as part of the last public outreach process was developing partnerships to leverage city funding. The above slide is a sampling of formalized partnerships that are a result of the last plan update. So we have quite a few successes, exciting projects and programs, new leadership, grants, partnerships, awards, and recognition. But we also have some challenges. The population continues to grow faster than staffing, park development, and programming. Our level of service, acres per thousand, is declining, and of course, we will always have major maintenance, which is ongoing.
Next, I'm going to share the key elements of this year's plan update process. We're expecting about a one-year timeframe for completion, and there'll be a range of community engagement opportunities, including committee input, open houses, workshops, online participation, and a statistically valid random household survey. I'll provide more detail on the inclusive engagement strategy in just a moment. This updated plan is going to build on the success of the 2011 plan and other planning efforts. However, we're going to add some new elements this year. New elements include a natural areas evaluation tool that'll help evaluate the priority areas to focus restoration efforts, infographics, which will distill complex information into a visually engaging manner that we find really connects with the public, and concept plans will be developed or updated. That's another element of the 2011 plan that really made a great connection with the public. Lesley just reviewed some of the highlights from the 2011 plan, which has worked really well and has generated a lot of successful projects. So for that reason, we'd like to bring forward some of the key elements from that plan that led to that success. Those include the decision-making tool, funding strategies, concept plans, and the cost model. And these are all tools that help focus resources on projects that advance our community's goals. I'd like to highlight a couple points in the process. We're going to pursue an inclusive engagement strategy. Previous outreach methods didn't yield participation that was representative of Renton's diverse population. We need to innovate to get different results, so that's what we're planning to do. The goal of the inclusive engagement effort is to hear from community members that are underrepresented in previous public outreach efforts. So we're going to meet people where they are. There'll be small informal meetings, familiar settings with known and trusted facilitators. So we're going to use this opportunity to build capacity and work with the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force. So three Inclusion Task Force members will participate in a training, and they'll conduct a total of four community conversations at key points in the process as a way to connect with communities.
Ms. Chair.
Yes?
Can you explain better how you're planning to connect with multiple communities? I mean, what is your plan to go to them?
Yes. Yes, so we're going to meet with the Inclusion Task Force and solicit volunteers from that group, and then they would go and have community conversations with groups that they're already members of in their community, is the idea. So that it might be a familiar place if they're in a part of a community group, if there's a neighborhood group, or a community association, or a church group, or something like that. It's going to depend upon who volunteers. They'll know better than we do who their network is, but we are going to utilize those relationships that the members of the Inclusion Task Force have in their communities.
Thank you. Let me see if I understand correctly. We are going to ask volunteers to do an outreach for the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Some of the themes that we're going to explore with this process include trends that impact our parks, recreation, and natural areas system, the number of events, staffing levels, land availability, major maintenance needs, and the funding landscape outside and within the city. Next steps include open house meetings, of which there are three. The first one is this evening, Thursday, at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Renton Community Center. We're also going to have online engagement for each open house for people who can't physically make it to the open house, so they're still able to participate. We'll also join you for three more Committee of the Whole briefings as we move through the process, and you can keep up to date with the project using our project website at rentonparksplan.com. And we'll be briefing the Parks Commission on March the 5th. And before we turn it over for questions, I just wanted to show you the interactive map that people can use to drop pins in the community to tell us about parks they like, the reasons they like them, barriers they've encountered that keep them from using parks more, or ideas they have for improving the system. So you can drop pins for each of those items. If we wanted to talk about Coulomb Park, and then you could answer a series of questions. So that continues for ideas and barriers, so we can really get a geographic sense of how people are using the system and how they'd like to see it improved. And with that, we'll return and invite any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
What's the timeframe on getting the plan updated?
We're expecting about a one-year process.
Any council members have any questions?
You already have the first community, the first open house, right?
It's on Thursday, this week.
Oh, okay. I thought that you already had it. I was going to ask you, how did it go? So withdraw my question.
We'll tell you next time.
And I have one question. Will you be leveraging the outcomes and recommendations of the Community Advisory Committee that we recently convened and apply that to any updates you're making to the plan?
The Community Advisory Committee recommendations were primarily related to our major maintenance, six-year capital improvement plan. This plan focuses more on planning, acquisition, development. We do, we will roll in some of the major maintenance, not quite to that level of detail, and then the recreation programming and natural areas.
If I could piggyback on that, Lesley and Erica are doing such a great job. And some of, to your question, some of the gaps that were identified and the community efforts that were identified in the CAC process will be used. That's part of what they'll be taking a look at. And I also wanted to just double back a little bit on your question, Councilwoman Perez, with regards to what we're calling volunteers out in the community. So they're still, for the inclusion portion of it, diverse, trying to get more diverse information back. The team's still going to be doing our normal outreach with the surveys and as much as we can, get out to the communities. Our consultant in other area cities and plans have utilized this strategy. So it's a way, like Erica was explaining, to get out a little bit deeper in the communities, where if we were going and saying, hey, come to the senior center, or come to an area that they might not be familiar with or comfortable with, by talking and experiencing these kind of outreaches with their community and gathering some information, or at least the comfort level of getting out to, to at least get their word out and what their wishes would be, or their concerns, challenges. That's just one other level of reaching out to that portion of the public. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Prince?
Kelly, thank you, because I was going to say, sitting in those CAC meetings, they did mention stuff besides the major maintenance. So I'm glad that you guys are going to look at those gaps that they mentioned and utilize that as part of this plan as well.
Yes.
collected a lot of good data, too.
Yes.
Absolutely. A lot from the original plan, which is what, 2011 plan, which is a lot of the information came from and what we evaluated.
Well, thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Oh, one more.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Kelly, for that information. I'm a little bit concerned just about the outreach into the, our diverse demographics, especially people whose language is, their second language, and they have a different culture. But I'm hoping, I'm waiting for the first open house, because that is going to show us if the outreach is working or not. So let's see how with the demographics, and from them, probably, we can work out on if we are not getting to our diverse communities to participate, how can we make sure that their voice is heard?
So if I may clarify, so our three open houses will be similar to the open houses that we did for our last plan update in 2011, and also similar to what we did with our Trails and Bicycle Master Plan. And in that typical open house situation, we do not typically have a diverse population attend, which is why we're using our Inclusion Task Force, training members, three, two, two members.
Two members.
Three members, training three members to do outreach to different communities. And so it's a targeted way to reach out to diverse communities as compared to the standard, let's have an open house approach. It's in addition to the open house approach. We will have translation services for Vietnamese and Spanish at our open house meeting. Those are the top two languages spoken at the Renton School District. We will have translation on the website for also Spanish and Vietnamese, but this is specifically trying to reach out to a different community.
Mr. Prince had one more question?
And I know we've got to move on, because we've got guests here from Metro. My question, we keep talking about this meeting on Thursday. We've got an audience here, folks that are possibly watching. What time and where is the meeting at on Thursday?
Oh, it's at the Renton Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Foreman?
President, yeah, I just, so I just wanted to get clarification, and perhaps you said this in the presentation, but this, like all of our long-term plans here, is sort of the blueprint, the vision, as we go forward for the next 20 years or longer, right? And one of the things I wanted to say about that is that for anybody listening tonight and anybody that comes to the open houses, that, you know, I just want for them to understand that this is, this is like our dream vision for how we would use our natural areas, where we'd like to add parks and so forth. We don't have the funding figured out for this, and people that show up at these open houses shouldn't feel constrained by the funding. If something makes sense, we want to put it in the plan, and then we'll seek opportunities, seek help to try and fund what we can and prioritize. Do I have that correct?
You have that absolutely correct, and thank you. And as part of our last plan, you may recall, we had $256 million worth of projects proposed as part of the plan. But it was, it was a great way, as you can see by some of the accomplishments, of applying for outside funding resources and leveraging city funds to get some, not all, of those projects accomplished.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could say one last, real quick thing. I know we've got guests here, too, just to make sure that, again, the team is doing a really great job of trying to make sure we're reaching out to the groups and the community that we haven't been able to get to before, so that through social media with Vietnamese and Spanish, as in, has been out and posted, so we're hoping that they will come to our community meeting, as well as in Renton Reporter and a lot of other avenues as well. So we're doing a lot of different strategies to get people there, so just wanted to follow with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the King County Metro Rapid Ride Eye Line introduction, and Mr. Zimmerman will introduce our guests.
President Whitche, members of the council, good evening. I'm Greg Zimmerman, Renton's Public Works Administrator. As you know, King County Metro Transit, through its Metro Connects program, is working on future planning and for expansion of the Rapid Ride, Bus Rapid Transit System. So today, we have with us Hannah McIntosh, Metro's Rapid Ride Program Director, and also Metro Dave Van Der Zee, Metro's Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan Project Manager, to present information about Metro Rapid Ride Eye Line, which will be serving Rent, Kent, Renton, and Auburn area. So Hannah and Dave.
Great, thank you. We're just getting the presentation pulled up here. Well, I was going to start by thanking you all for your patience with the multiple reschedules that happened during the snow event, but I might be thanking you for your patience right now as we get this presentation pulled up also.
No.
There we go. Presentation being pulled up. So thank you, Greg, for that introduction. Again, I'm Hannah McIntosh with King County Metro. I am the Program Director for the Rapid Ride Program there. I'm joined by Dave Van Der Zee, who is our Project Manager for one component of this Rapid Ride Eye Line effort. And again, with all the snow events over the past two weeks, we ended up with briefings stacked up tonight here and in Auburn. So you're getting half the team, but I hope we will do the project justice. So thank you very much for having us. Do you want, next slide? So before we jump into the details of the Eye Line project, I wanted to talk just a little bit about what Rapid Ride is and why we are so excited to be here tonight talking about this investment in the city of Renton. So Rapid Ride is a robust arterial bus rapid transit system. And when we talk about bus rapid transit, we are talking about a rubber-tire transit system that brings with it a significant level of capital investment. In many ways, we like to think of it as a bus system that looks and feels and operates a little bit more like a train. And the idea is that with that capital investment, that gives it really a permanent and a fixed feel, it drives investment, it drives economic development, it can drive land use and other kind of bigger-picture community development, things of that nature. So there's a permanence to these transit investments that will look and feel a little bit different than a standard bus route. We like to think of it as something that adds value and stimulates growth. Specifically, we think of Rapid Ride, and can I just ask, has anybody here ridden Rapid Ride? There are the red buses, I'm seeing some nodding, some, okay. So we think of it as the best of Metro. It has our highest-quality services and facilities today. It carries about 20 percent of our daily ridership throughout King County, so 78,000 daily rides today. It is actually right up there with how many people are riding Link Light Rail today, although you might not know it. It employs really state-of-the-art innovations. I think the place you see that on the initial wave of Rapid Ride lines that went in, starting almost 10 years ago, was with real-time information at the stops, so people could see when their next bus was coming. It just, it kind of puts your mind at ease to know that there is a bus coming, and you know when it's going to be coming. It has, and this is a really important one, it has the highest level of speed and reliability investments of any of our service. So these are the things that, to your average rider, are not always going to be visible, but they are there in the way you time your signals, in the way that maybe you give the bus what we call a cue jump, so it can jump out ahead of traffic, get a signal. Really, those things that keep the bus competitive and attractive for riders. Our goals for Rapid Ride are to have a 20 percent travel time savings, but measured at least five years after it goes in, over the routes that it replaces. So people will have at least a 20 percent faster trip, hopefully more. And we've seen a 50 percent increase in ridership when you compare it to existing routes. So for instance, the E-line that runs up Aurora in North Seattle now, carry, gosh, I might not get these numbers exactly right, but it's around 17,000 people a day. So these are just, they really are carrying a lot of people around our region. Do you mind? So two years ago, Metro came out with the Metro Connects vision, which anticipated a very ambitious expansion of our service throughout the county, and also really represented a doubling down on Rapid Ride. We see Rapid Ride as one of our most successful products, and there's a high level of demand for it throughout the county. And we are excited to be bringing this to Renton. So Dave, if you don't mind, one more click ahead. So the vision came out in Metro Connects about two years ago, and then it was our job to really map out the implementation plan. So we had the vision, and then, just as we heard in the Parks presentation just now, you do your vision setting, and then you map out what you can fund and how quickly you can put it in place. And the initial plan for Rapid Ride expansion in the King County Capital Improvement Program is outlined at a very high level here, and there are a few points I want to make with this slide. The first one is that you will see the Eye Line in the very early years of implementation. So we prioritized projects according to a few different criteria. We looked at, for those of you who might be familiar with our service guidelines, we anchored in our service guidelines. So we looked at productivity of existing transit routes, we looked at ridership of existing transit routes. We looked at ridership of existing transit routes. We looked at geographic balance throughout the county, not, you know, we can't just invest in one part of the county. We looked at eagerness and desire to partner from the jurisdictions that would be served by a line. And then we also looked at equity considerations. So we gave higher priority to projects that served lower-than-average minority communities, census tracts with minority communities or low-income communities. So you see the plan here. Renton has already served by one Rapid Ride line, as you know, the F-line, the Eye Line here coming in 2023. The long-range vision in Metro Connects had an additional, does still have, an additional Rapid Ride line serving Renton that would connect Renton to Overlake. That third line that would serve Renton is a strong contender for that last programmed line in 2027. You see, it says an east or a south King County line in 2027. We, 2027 is a long ways away, and so that line will be programmed when we update the Capital Improvement Program again in the next biennial budget cycle. The other and the last point I wanted to make before I hand it over to Dave is that we are excited about partnership with your city. Your staff has already been great, engaged, enthusiastic, challenging partners on this, and we really appreciate that level of engagement, that level of staff support and partnership. And I wanted to make the point, you know, there are a lot of projects here, not a lot, there's a handful of projects you hear and that you see here that are planned for the city of Seattle. And the city of Seattle comes to the table with a certain type of partnership. They passed a very large transportation levy. The H-line is a great example, where they're able to bring tens of millions of dollars to that project in the Del Ridge Avenue corridor. The H-line, though, provides a really great example of another way to partner, which is the city of Burien, where that project terminates in the South. The city of Burien does not have tens of millions of dollars to bring for capital investment for the H-line, but they have partnered with us very actively on grant applications and we together have secured $10 million in regional mobility grants for that project. They have been enthusiastic partners around really thinking critically around how right-of-way in the city of Burien can be used and dedicated to transit. They've helped with the public conversation and so I just, I really like that H-line project because it provides a great example of the different ways that we can work together to make these projects a reality. And that was everything I wanted to say. I'm going to hand it over to Dave.
Thanks, Hannah. Yeah, so my name's Dave Van Der Zee. I'm the Project Manager for one piece of this project, as Hannah mentioned. There's a couple of different pieces going on and I'll just kind of talk through how we hope to get from where we are today to an Eye Line implementation in 2023. So one thing about the Eye Line is that it's not a route that exists today in sort of a one-for-one upgrade. So where Metro in the past has had routes that were already in existence from end to end that were upgraded to Rapid Ride, the Eye Line is really sort of a composite of pieces of the Route 169 and the Route 180 today, which have about 6,000 daily riders. It's in the top 25% of some of our most productive and highest ridership routes in our non-Seattle service area. We know we have a high proportion of Orca Lift users, which is our low-income-based fare on the Route 180. Another reason that we looked at this Eye Line alignment is due to its connections to sound transit, other Rapid Ride connections, connecting it to the frequent network, our frequent system, and really looking at how this feeds into a larger transit network. We expect to look at $120 million of capital investments along the corridor. And what that looks like is investments at the Rapid Ride stations. So one thing that comes along with Rapid Ride is not just a bus stop with a simple flag, but enhanced stations with passenger amenities, real-time information. As Hannah mentioned, also looking at those speed and reliability investments, some of those investments that may not be visible to the customer, but really make the service perform well. So things like those queue jumps, bus-only lanes, other signal timing improvements. We also look at our access to transit, access to the Rapid Ride stations. So kind of thinking about the passenger's journey from where their origin is to the stop and from their destination stop to where they're going. So really kind of thinking about the whole trip and kind of capital improvements are needed for that. So we expect this funding to come from a few different places, including grant partnerships. We have a partnership with Kent already in place, looking at local funding from King County, an additional funding application with the FTA. So you'll see on that graphic that we expect to apply for a small starts application in the fall of 2020. So getting from where we are now to service in 2023, we have a couple of big milestones to get through. Right now, we're in that red arrow in the planning phase and we'll expect that to go throughout most of 2019. Where we get to late 2019, early 2020 is that preliminary design phase and start doing some preliminary engineering with the goal of having an application in the fall of 2020, where we, I should also mention where we expect to get to the end of 2019 is a preferred alignment for the Eye Line. And so we have that preferred alignment that goes into our federal application for the FTA small starts application in 2020. In 2021 through 2023 really is when we're turning over dirt and building things on the ground and actually building out an Eye Line and getting things ready for service to start in 2023. And one thing that I'll mention that's not on this timeline, but I'll get into in the next slide here, is the Renton-Kent Auburn Area Mobility Plan. So this is another project and sort of an interim step in the Eye Line process, and that's sort of what creates the route that becomes the Eye Line. So as I mentioned, the Eye Line right now is made up of segments of Routes 169 and 180. And so we are embarking on this process to do a number of things. One is just to respond to other mobility needs in the area. We know that service, Metro's service has been a bit static for the last several years and so as mobility needs have changed and travel patterns have changed, we're trying to take a holistic look at the transit system, not just the creation of the Eye Line, but looking at sort of mobility needs across a wider swath of South King County. This project in particular will have a focus on underserved populations and having a really a focus on an equity-focused outreach approach and really understanding what the impacts to our vulnerable populations are as we make changes to the system and also ensuring that we're getting all the voices as part of our planning and outreach process for both the mobility plan as a whole and also gathering that feedback for the Eye Line. In addition, we're also just focused on making improvements to the network as a whole. So thinking about what do we need to do to respond to different changes in ridership patterns? How do we increase ridership? Are there other parts of the system that aren't performing well from a reliability standpoint? And again, kind of thinking about that whole network, that whole suite of changes that we can make. And again, lastly, as I mentioned, one result that we'll get with this plan is a new route that will then be upgraded to the Eye Line in 2023. So we expect this plan, this sort of first phase, to be implemented in September of 2020. So following that table, that arrow below, where we are right now is we're about to launch in our first phase of public outreach. So we're moments away. We expect in the next few days to launch our outreach process for the Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan. It's kind of a mouthful, so I have to make sure I'm saying that slowly. We expect that process to run through the end of the year and really focus on getting that in front of King County Council in the spring of 2020. They'll look at, they'll vote on that as a part of our service change process in the spring of 2020. We'll use the summer to come back out and inform people about what the changes were that were approved. And then we look at September 2020 as the beginning of this new change. And so we expect changes to a number of routes, including the creation of this Eye Line alignment, setting us up for 2023. The other thing that I want to note is our integration with other projects going on in our study area and particularly here in Renton. So one thing I just want to point out too, that Melva Slackowitz, who's in the audience today, she is the Project Manager for the Renton Access to Transit Study. So that was a study that was commissioned through Proviso by our council. And so that's also going on throughout this year and is expected to wrap up sometime this fall. And so we expect Melva to come back and offer some more information at a later date on some details on that presentation, on that project. And then a couple of other notable projects in our study area include coordinating with Sound Transit's I-405 BRT, so working very closely with the future implementation of that project. We also have a Community Connections project within Renton in the Benson Hill area, so ensuring that we're coordinating with that project and that's sort of rolled into the Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan. And then additionally coordinating, making sure that we're coordinating with both the city on any sort of roadway projects or other capital improvements and also our partners at Wash D, and we kind of think about any opportunities where there's a road project that we might want to build off of for another capital improvement that will either benefit Rapid Ride or any of the number of other routes in the study area. So where we are right now is, as I mentioned, that we're about to launch our first phase of public outreach. We're looking at a three-phase process. That first phase that begins in the next few days will just be sort of a needs assessment phase where we go out and listen to the community, gather information about what's working well with the transit system today, what's not working so well, understanding how people are using the service, in particular for the Eye Line, how people are using the Route 169 and 180 today. And really taking that feedback, taking that back at the end of March and really looking at how do we develop service concepts around that. Also presenting a couple of different alternatives for people to consider for the Eye Line alignment and having them weigh in on where their travel needs are. We come back out to the public in a second phase of outreach and that's really coming out with two different service scenarios, really presenting them with some choices based on the feedback that we got on Phase One about some choices that they have for changes to the transit network and also an alignment that includes a representation of the Eye Line. So we'll work on that through the summer months in June and July, take feedback from that phase and come back with a third and final phase where we really kind of move forward a preferred concept. And that preferred concept would be a single transit network with changes in our study area and additionally with a, you know, a final preferred alignment that we would use for our federal application to the FTA for the Eye Line. So that process is expected to run through most of 2019. It really set us up to begin that application work for the Eye Line throughout 2020, but also, again, moving us towards changes to the transit network as a whole for September of 2020 in preparation for the Eye Line. So that's where we are today at a very high level. As I mentioned, we have a couple of different components. So we have Hannah here, my contact information for the Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan. Greg McNed is our Eye Line Project Manager and Robin Austin is our Community Outreach Specialist, who's really handling a lot of the outreach for both the Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan and Eye Line, which we really see as sort of an integrated joint project. So I think that leaves us a few minutes for questions, if you guys have any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. That was very informative and needed and we appreciate your coming out here and giving us that update. Before we move on to questions, though, I did want to acknowledge that council member, County Council Member Dave Uplegrove is here in the audience today and he was instrumental in making sure that the county budgeted for our Renton Transit Access Study. So we wanted to thank you for that and I think we might have some questions related to that as well. So does any other council member have questions? Ryan, Mr. McIrvin, I'm sorry.
Not so much a question. Well, first, I do also want to echo that thanks to Council Member Uplegrove for being here and for supporting that funding for the Renton Transit Access Study. I certainly want to say I look forward to hearing those results in the fall. Would be curious in the, I guess in the interim, if we, I don't want to guess because that's why we're doing the study, but to see how that will guide and if you think it will be helpful in shaping our integration, as you said, with Rapid Ride Service here in Renton. Also curious too on that future expansion and how it would integrate with that potentially to Overlake, as was mentioned, the longer-term one on the slide that you showed.
Well, I think certainly for the longer term, we're well-positioned to take into account the results of any, you know, study that happens over the course of this year or the next year. And that definitely will help inform that prioritization process that we go through as that final line gets named, when the county budget is updated in the next biennium also. In terms of integration with the mobility plan or the Eye Line?
Yeah.
Dave, if you want to take that?
I think there's definitely an opportunity to take advantage of the Access to Transit Study in terms of how we plan other changes to the transit network, also in that needs assessment phase, as we understand how people are using the system today, how they're accessing it. That's going to be very valuable information that will really feed into some of the concepts that we develop as part of the mobility plan. So we're working very closely coordinating with Melva and that plan as we go forward because we do think we're going to get some pretty valuable information from their efforts as well, that will feed directly into some choices that we, as part of our broader mobility plan.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
So I wanted to also thank Metro for being here and thank the county for giving us such priority. There really has been good teaming between Renton and Metro and I'm very appreciative of that. And I also did want to make sure you knew that as a council, we really are looking at where these investments are going to go and we'll make sure that we do appropriate zoning and comprehensive plan changes to keep everything synced up. We've already had at some of our council offsites discussions about parking standards and how they get impacted by the availability of good public transit. And so we've got our eye on that and will, I think that this will give us opportunities to help the region-wide housing shortages by getting people close to where these new Rapid Ride stations are. So thank you for that and I look forward to continuing to make sure we have a unified plan. I appreciate the proactiveness to come here and to have all the open houses in our community.
Ms. Perez?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Two things. One, I highly appreciate the Metro Community Connection programs that, to see what are the needs in the Benson Hill area, which is, which for us is really important, so I thank you for that. But the next question, and you were here in the previous presentation, is about your outreach. You explained that you want to serve the most underserved population and you know our community is really diverse. And one of the things that I have noticed in the past is that the outreach of Metro is a lot online, and questionnaires and surveys online. And unfortunately, a lot of our community, especially the multicultural and multilanguage population, sometimes they don't have access to this. So if we want to serve them, we need to be effective doing outreach to these populations. Any plans of how you're planning to reach our diverse community?
Yeah, there's a few different ways, I think, that we're looking at doing that. And certainly, your point's well-taken that, you know, outreach through online surveys is not always the best way to catch everyone's, you know, thoughts and opinions on any changes. One way that we are looking for outreach, doing outreach in this study area is partnering with community-based organizations. And actually, Metro does have the ability to compensate community-based organizations for their sort of outreach work on our behalf. And so identifying those community organizations that we can partner with. There's also a couple of different pieces to that. One is we'll have a broader sort of advisory board that we expect to have, representation from these community-based organizations on that advisory board that will help us get some of these concepts. In addition to that, we have our Mobility Board. You may have heard it called a founding board in the past in other Metro projects, but essentially that's just a community or a citizen advisory board and we're going to be looking for recommendations from these community-based organizations for folks that could participate on that panel and really sort of reach voices that we might not traditionally be able to reach online and through other methods. In addition, doing in-person and in-language outreach, so working through Metro and working through other partners and identifying opportunities to communicate in language at existing events and really providing, you know, opportunities to provide input beyond just the standard open house format where we expect people to come to us. Similar to the previous presentation, looking for opportunities to go to existing events, use, leverage sort of existing communities and relationship opportunities to connect that way. opportunities to, to connect that way, and really, really gather that feedback, and not only gather that feedback, but really elevate that feedback in a way that places priority on those underserved populations in the way that we design our network concepts and evaluate the impacts to any changes that we make.
Now, I would just add that we are very interested in your feedback on how it's working. So we'll be working closely with staff here in Renton to understand really what can be effective and what has been effective for them, but we are open and eager for your feedback also. Where I feel, you know, I think there is a renewed or a new push on, on our agency's part, I hear it at this meeting tonight, to just really double down on inclusive outreach and engagement. And I feel like we're all learning together a little bit about what works and doesn't work. So please tell us when things are working or aren't working.
Thank you. So if there are no further questions, we'll adjourn the committee of the whole and reconvene here at 7 o'clock for the full council meeting. Thank you.